So this, does this be your last big project?
The swamp, I mean, we took it all over.
I'm done now. Great for you, let me hear that. We'll hear it. Good. The age of winter. So what kind of boots do you have? Day hikers? Saltines?
No, I don't, I don't think.
Never get their water boots.
Yeah.
Maybe not saddlebag?
That's all.
Yeah. We drove it.
We drove it.
We were flat on it, we thought we tried and we were so close we kept going. It was the top. Good, well, that's fun. Congratulations. Okay. Awesome. We kept going, we're almost there, we're almost there. Nice view right there.
At this time, the city council will convene to consider public matters. Members of the public may speak on any matter listed on the agenda. If you wish to speak on any matter on the agenda, please fill out the blue speaker card and provide it to the city clerk at this time. Please also provide the city clerk with any written materials you may wish to be distributed to city council for any item or for general public comment at this time. And as a courtesy, they will be distributed to the city council. When it is your turn to speak, the city clerk will call your name to speak during the given item. As required by state law, please limit your comments on agenda items to the specific item at issue. If you have comments on items not listed on the agenda, you may make those comments during the time allocated for general public comments. Finally, please only address your comments to the city council, as staff will only respond to questions from the city council and not from public speakers. When the city clerk indicates and you see the green light of the podium illuminated, your three minute, three-minute comment period will begin. Next, we have the invocation tonight by Dustin Call, who is a Sunday school teacher of the Lake Forest Ward of the Church of Latter-day Saints.
Good evening. Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee this evening in gratitude for the opportunity and freedom that we have to gather here to discuss the needs and affairs of our community. We are grateful and privileged to live in a place in this world, in this country, and in a state that is beautiful, safe, and thriving, and pray that each of us may be able to do our part to keep it that way. We pray for those serving our city and making decisions on our behalf, that they will continue to do so with honor and integrity. We pray that thou will bless this meeting this evening and all those in attendance that, as we discuss the needs and affairs of our city, that we will do so with an attitude of civility, cooperation, and unity. We love thee, Father, and are so grateful to thee for thy blessings, and for these things we pray, in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. And tonight's pledge of allegiance will be done by Boy Scout Troop six-two-eight. Call them forward.
Audience, please stand. If in uniform, please salute. If not, right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Audience, at ease.
If you would like to make a comment, please fill out the blue speaker card, turn it in to the city clerk, and your name will be called. Comments are limited to three minutes of uninterrupted time per person. The council and staff will not respond to questions or comments during the public comment period. When you are called to speak, please approach the podium. Your three minutes will begin when you see the green light on the public comment podium illuminate. The green light will remain illuminated for two minutes. When the light changes from green to yellow, speakers will have one minute left to conclude their comments. When the light changes from yellow to red, please conclude your thoughts and return to your seat. A timer will no longer be displayed on the screen. Madam Clerk, have we had any requests to speak under public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've had three requests to speak. First speaker is Brenda Watkins, followed by Joseph Petit, followed by Brian McMillan. Brenda?
Hi, I had a couple of things. One is, it would be really nice to have a crosswalk at Osterman and Normandale. The cars go really fast, there's a lot of kids that go to school. Having one of those crosswalks where you push a button and it lights up would be really nice. Nobody ever tries to stop for anybody who wants to cross the street there. It's a very long ways there between, you know, Pittsford and that other street up there to cross. The other thing is pickleball. I'm loving playing pickleball. It's getting dark at night. There's only the Portola Hills one. It would be really nice. I called the sports park twice, the guy never called me back. I know that there's pickleball in the morning, but there's no pickleball for people who are actually still working. So nothing on the weekends, nothing at night. It'd be nice if it wasn't just basketball, but also if the pickleball people had a chance to play at the sports park. And then, I actually live in Whispering Hills, there's that piece of land that for years, years ago, I remember we went on a bus tour and all kinds of stuff. They were gonna, I think, make it like a public growing things place, but they never did that. That would be a great place for a pickleball court. It's, you know, on the street, it's on the street, there's cars, there's traffic, it's pretty big. So that would be awfully nice if that could be turned into pickleball. I know that's really popular in the community right now, and it's hard to find places to play. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mayor, can I respond real quick, please?
Very briefly.
Just to, real quick to let you know, some good news. We're actually gonna have our first indoor pickleball facility here in Lake Forest. Are you familiar with that?
No.
So, there's a gentleman by name of Adam Go, who went before the planning commission, got approved just this last week or so. And it'll be fourteen courts, seven AM to ten PM, indoors, every day of the week. So, just wanted to give you that information.
Oh, that's awesome.
Probably six to eight months for him to complete that, so.
Where, where's it gonna be located?
It's on Atlantic Ocean. If you know where the skating rink is along there, there's a facility that's been there for volleyball and whatnot, so that's where it'll be.
Awesome, thank you.
Just, if I can just clarify that, that's not a city facility, that's a private facility.
Correct.
Just so we're clear, it's not, not a city of Lake Forest.
Oh, so you have to pay?
It's a private.
You have to pay for it?
I, I don't know the details. Again, it's not, it's not a city facility.
Well, if it's not free, that would be a drag. I mean, that doesn't help if it's somewhere you have to pay for.
Sure. I just want to clarify.
Okay.
When you said "we have," and I thought, "we..." All right, next comment.
Okay, second speaker is Joseph Petit.
Hello, how's it going? I'm mainly here to talk about two points that I think are incredibly crucial to this community. The first being the unreasonable construction times. I feel that a lot of the construction times are beginning at the time that a lot of people are getting off of work and are creating hazardous danger zones inside of the major intersections like El Toro Road. That road is incredibly busy. I almost saw someone get hit by a car the other day because of the, the limitations of one lane. And the other issue I wanted to drive home is that we have a current, currently, we have a parking permit system. It's my understanding that's under association fees, and I completely understand that. That's something I've always, you know, wanted for the community, is a, a strong HOA community that, you know, really makes the community safe. But at the same time, I'm having to walk two blocks to my own parking spot right now, and I, I feel that's unreasonable, as I am a, a current renter. I'm not a homeowner, but I am a renter, and I feel that someone like me in my position should be able to buy a parking permit if, if I'm eligible. Or, and not if I'm eligible, I should be eligible to get a parking permit if, if, through some means. And, yeah, those are my two main points. That's it.
Thank you. Did you leave some contact information on your blue speaker card?
I left my email.
Okay. Well, I was gonna say that maybe staff could follow up with those two items, just to provide some more information and some background on, on these two matters.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Well, if you, if you're comfortable providing a number, do so. If not, it'll be through email.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Very good. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And our last speaker is Brian McMillan.
Many Lake Forest webpages and official documents proclaim the city's "business friendliness," in quotes. Unfortunately, as a property owner, I found that, just, I have found just the opposite. I'm here tonight to see if we can work together to make sure those claims are true. To make Lake Forest marketplace more desirable to tenants and customers, as well as more attractive, I've made a number of important improvements. I've replaced the property manager, I've replaced the coin laundromat to stop, hopefully stop attracting trespassers slash homeless. I'm replacing the ninety-nine cent only store with a specialty market and food court. I know that's important. I've replaced the security company for more assertive patrolling, and I've made several property improvements. I know that the Lake Forest marketplace has a reputation, I didn't know that before I bought it, for being down there and is kind of the poor stepchild. Unfortunately, it's the first thing you see when you get off the freeway. So I just need your help in improving that property. So I have some requests. On October thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, I was issued a citation charging me with municipal code violations for, one, five point oh seven point two hundred, massage establishment license required. I was charged with operating a massage establishment without a massage establishment license. A second charge was unlawful conduct. No employee of the massage establishment or any certified massage therapist shall expose any genitals, pubic regions, buttocks, anuses, or female breasts. These violations are considered misdemeanors under City of Lake Forest Municipal Code five point oh seven point four-three-five and punishable under Lake Forest Municipal Code one point oh one point two-two-oh. The citation was unnecessary, unlawful, improper, malicious, and tortious, thereby subjecting the code enforcement officer to possible forfeiture of special or limited immunity, as well as special and punitive damages. This citation was obviously a product of the law enforcement department's scorched earth strategy of advancing the personal agendas of one or more Lake Forest officials and staff. The scorched earth was the city officials', where it's not mine. The citation was followed by a phone call from a, from an attorney in the city's attorney's office, who stated that things would not go well if I did not evict Ocean Pearl facials. And then to go on, as of October twelfth, a few days ago, I was deprived of my rights to appeal these charges of code violations, because I was not given a hearing appeal date by the city within the sixty-day period prescribed in the original handwritten citation. This, this is what the citation looks like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I need to ask you to wrap up your comments.
I'm sorry?
I need to ask you to conclude your comments. We have a three-minute time limit per speaker.
Okay. Requests, I request the law enforcement officers, I'm requesting this of the city manager now. I'm requesting that the code enforcement officers work cooperatively with property managers rather than using abusive code enforcement tactics. Number two, I'd like to request the code enforcement officers to stop harassing merchants. Number three, I would request the code enforcement officers to stop harassing landowners by using invalid and malicious citations. And I'd like to request the city's attorney's office to work with merchants and landowners in a cooperative fashion, rather than using deceitful, devious, manipulative tactics.
Mr. McMillan, I, I've been briefed by staff on this matter in general.
I'm sorry?
I have been briefed by staff on some of the things you're bringing forward. I would encourage a conversation between city staff and you as to the information we have, so we can make sure we're all, starting from the same basis of understanding, and then go from there.
Thank you, that's why I'm here.
Appreciate it, thank you. So look for a call from somebody with the city. Look for a call from somebody with the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our public comment.
Okay, anybody else like to address the city council on things that are not on the agenda? All right. Seeing none. That brings us to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one vote. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or staff request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Have there been any requests to remove an item from this consent calendar from the public?
I've received none.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, would you like to pull anything?
I have a statement.
A statement, yes, go ahead.
There are warrants on the register from the County of Orange. I am an employee with the County of Orange, but I do not work for the departments that generated the warrants. Because the County of Orange is a public agency and because I do not work for the departments in question, I have determined that I have a non-interest in these warrants, and I will be voting on this item. Mayor, thank you, and I'd like to move consent calendar.
Oh, second that.
We have a motion and a second for the consent. Have there been any requests for a public comment? I know there was nobody wanting to pull. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote on that.
Need one more vote, please. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We are on to item six, a public hearing. The title of this item is Great Scott Tree Care Entitlements, and I'd like to open the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have a presentation from our Assistant Director of Community Development, Amy Stoneage.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, I have a presentation for a request for entitlements listed on the slide before you for your consideration. Great Scott Tree Care is a tree trimming company who is proposing to develop a contractor's storage yard at Linear Lane, south of Dimension Drive. The applicant proposes to use the property as their administrative office and for the overnight storage of tree trimming vehicles and temporary wood chip storage. The proposed project requires approval of a general plan amendment, a zone change, development agreement, tentative parcel map, and a use permit. As background history of the project site, it was formerly the Hess and Cohen residential properties. These properties were developed in the early nineteen hundreds with two homes, a barn, and various animal pens. Only the barn and one house remain. The house and barn are on the east side of Serrano Creek and the regional trail, which run along the property's north and western boundaries. The project site is surrounded by industrial uses on all sides, including a self-storage facility to the south, a truck terminal and contractor's storage yards to the north, industrial uses to the south, and multifamily and single-family to the south beyond those businesses. An industrial park was developed around the project site in the nineteen eighties. The industrial development created access challenges for the project site. The Great Scott parcels shown outlined in blue and the adjacent industrial properties noted as A and B are shown in pink. Two access easements were created to, to serve all the industrial properties. At the time of the industrial development, an easement from Canyatta Road was granted to provide access for the industrial properties. This included the self-storage and the two homes. A second private drive was created for parcels noted as A and B and the Hess and Cohen properties. This access was from Linear Lane. The exhibit here shows access easements in green, the private drive in yellow, the regional trail in orange. Before the city's incorporation, the County of Orange developed the regional trail along Serrano Creek and placed a scenic preservation easement on both sides of the trail, but they excluded the Hess and Cohen homes, shown here in the green. In twenty twenty-two, Great Scott received county approval that allowed them future development to encroach up to fifteen percent within the scenic preservation easement. The proposed use would include parking for tree trimming trucks and employees, office space, storage areas, a wood chip storage area, and an underground detention basin beneath the truck parking. Access would be from Linear Lane. This would go through an internal drive aisle. Exiting would occur on the private drive. The private drive would also serve as the access for emergency vehicles. The private drive would be gated at Linear Lane and the southernmost point of the project site. Great Scott proposes to operate the business from six AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, and seven AM to five PM on Saturday. Business operations consist mainly of administrative offices and the overnight parking and morning deployment of tree trimming trucks. Operations are conducted off-site, and landscape debris is taken to the facility in City of Stanton. Wood chips are chipped in the field and would be transported back to this site at the end of the day and placed in the wood chip area. However, no wood chipping occurs on-site. These chips are moved out of the area weekly. This photo shows the business operations in the City of Stanton. The application to establish the proposed use includes several entitlements. First, a general plan amendment to revise the existing land use of the regional park open space on parcel one. This is shown in green on the top map. To urban industrial twenty-five, I've shown in purple. This is consistent with the surrounding land use designation and allows for both industrial uses and residential at a density of twenty-five dwelling units per acre. Parcel two remains regional park open space. The existing zoning must also be changed to align with the general plan. According to the zoning code, a contractor's storage yard is permitted in the urban industrial twenty-five zoning district with approval of a use permit. Parcel one, currently zoned agriculture, shown in light green, and light industrial, shown in purple, would be changed to an urban industrial twenty-five, shown in blue. This is consistent with surrounding light industrial properties. Parcel two, currently zoned light industrial, with the purple with the red hatch, would be changed to open space conservation, the green with the red hatch. This change would preserve the site's regional open space. The tentative parcel map provides, excuse me, provides for access easements and the retention of Serrano Creek and the regional trail. The tentative parcel map would consolidate the three parcels of the project site into two, a contractor's storage yard and Serrano Creek trail and the regional trail, which would, which would remain undeveloped open space. The use permit would establish the regulatory framework and set conditions of approval for the contractor's storage yard. A development agreement is required whenever a general plan amendment is approved. This development agreement require, requires Great Scott to provide a twenty-five thousand dollar contribution to the city. On August eighth, the planning commission considered the project, heard from neighboring residents, and focused on four issues: noise, wood chip storage, trail alignment, and easement access. The commission recommended approval to the city council with additional conditions, which I will explain in my following slides. Noise. So as part of the application, the applicant initially submitted a noise study. The study was conducted from Serrano Court, where the multifamily residents are located approximately two-hundred-and-forty-five feet away from the project site, and concluded there would be no impact. At the hearing, the commission listened to residents of Charmilla, a street located three-hundred-and-eighty feet from the project site, who expressed concerns about the proposed six AM start time and the potential noise impacts due to unique topographic features associated with the Serrano Creek area. Based on these concerns, the commission revised the condition for a start time one hour later at seven AM on weekdays and eight AM on Saturdays. In response, the applicant conducted an additional noise study to assess potential impacts on the Charmilla residents. The second study concluded that even at full operation, the noise would not exceed the city's noise standards on residential properties. They concluded that the location of the self-storage facility helps to reduce noise, and there's no canyon effect. This finding of no impact led the applicant to request the, to request the original six AM start This finding of no impact led the applicant to request the original 6:00 AM start times, of which staff supports. The commission also expressed concerns about fire risks in the wood chip storage area and added a condition to address storage of wood chips during high-fire hazard warning. The applicant agreed to this condition. Additionally, a trail alignment and the regional trail must be corrected to avoid losing the existing trail easement. This requires a new easement dedicated to the county of Orange on the tentative parcel map. The applicant has agreed and is currently working with the county to address this condition. The planning commission also included an additional condition that limited all Great Scott vehicles to the private drive leading to Linear Lane. However, based on a discussion with the applicant, staff is recommending that this condition continue to allow administrative staff through the existing Canyatta Road, through the existing easement to Canyatta Road, but limit tree trimming trucks to use only the private drive. This condition is included in the use permit and is shown in Attachment 8 in your agenda In addition to the three new conditions, staff is recommending revisions to clarify several conditions of approval on the tentative parcel map and use permit. These are noted in that Attachment 8 of the agenda packet. These revisions have the same intent as the planning commission conditions, however additional detail has been added to simplify, clarify, add timing, and a responsible party. So in summary, through the site planning and review process, with the conditions of approval as recommended by the planning commission and clarified by city staff, the project ensures the protection of Serrano Creek and the regional trail. It also ensures that the contractor's storage yard is compatible with the surrounding industrial uses and the nearby residential community. Therefore, staff recommends the city council adopt the MND and approve a general plan amendment, tentative parcel map, and use permit applications with staff-recommended conditions of approval. Additionally, staff recommends the city council introduce first reading of the ordinance approving the development agreement and zone change. And a RADA sheet is on the dais with minor corrections before you, and that concludes my presentation. The applicant and business owner are available and present to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Before you get away, let me check with my colleagues. Any questions of staff? Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. So I went and visited the, you know, the site, and I'm looking at that south end where the wood chip storage, which is also where the trucks are nearby. So this 6:00 AM start time, I'm a little concerned about why we're doing that as that early start. I mean, all construction in the city can't begin before 7:00. If they're a local company, I don't know if they have to drive an hour or not. And I read the report from the MD Acoustics people and looking at that, but looking at that picture with, if that's all their trucks that are going to be there, do you know whether or not they used their actual trucks at that time at 6:00 in the morning to see if that study represented that decibel level?
Certainly. The operations, as indicated, are only for the trucks coming and going. They don't perform any work on-site. So essentially, what happens is that the employees arrive, they trade their car out for a truck, and they leave the site through the private drive access along Linear Lane.
Okay, so hypothetically, if they have a 6:00 AM start, people are showing up between 5:30, 5:45, and then they're getting in those trucks and taking off at 6:00 AM. So, you know, my concern is with the noise element. I know MD Acoustics and their figures in there, I'm just a little concerned still about those residents that are on Charmilla, just outside of that, they're how, the close proximity, the 200 and some odd feet that you were mentioning in there for those trucks starting up at 6:00 AM in the morning and all at once. And so I understand they're not doing work on the site, but, you know, getting those all fired up and getting out, it's got to create some noise. So I guess, you know, for my colleagues, I'm not in support of a 6:00 AM start time.
Well, we'll have more discussion here, but I just want to make sure we get our questions asked.
Thank you, Mayor. So his question was, when they did that noise study, did they do it with the trucks? Was that, were the trucks operating in the morning part of that noise study?
The, both noise studies, I'd probably defer to the applicant for details on that.
Okay, because that was the question, and I have the same concerns, because I was having the same issue with Home Depot when they were moving, when they were having trucks come in before the 7:00 AM, and I was getting phone calls from residents that it's pretty loud. Now, I know they're just going to switch out their private vehicles for the truck, but when those trucks go into the reverse, it makes a pretty loud noise, and I don't care what study is done. That is a pretty loud and annoying noise at 6:00 in the morning. So I have the same concerns as my colleague does, but, you know, if they can say, hey, we won't use the reverse function, that we'll pull in at night, in the evening, and back in and then drive out straight, that's fine, but I just see there's going to be a time where we're going to be having complaints that at 6:00 AM, and we say 6:00 AM, but the people get there before 6:00 AM to jump in their trucks, so now we're talking 5:30. So, I mean, that time is going to be backed up a little bit, and so I, what can we put in place to say that, okay, we let you do this at 6:00 AM, and you violated that? Can we go back and say, okay, now it's 7:00?
Certainly. One of the things I can explain is that this is an industrial area, and there are a number of trucks that operate at that time of day. We don't typically put limits on time for businesses, and so we looked at it with that as well. The applicant does have, they do face their trucks a certain way, and I'll let them explain more about that, because they've taken into consideration the backup beeping as well. Also, keep in mind that there is a self-storage building that separates this particular use from any residential, and that's quite a buffer.
Go ahead.
So here's, I guess, okay, since that's all there, have we have ever gotten complaints from those residents from Serrano Court or from Charmilla, the residents on Charmilla, that there's, we have noise complaints?
Not directed from that angle that I'm aware of. We have gotten complaints, but not from that angle. Not from that angle of where this business is going to be located.
I'm not so much worried about the area, I'm just about the whole area. If it's a whole business complex, right, or industrial complex has anywhere from there generated a noise complaint?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Mayor Protem.
I want to thank you for the thorough report. I know this has been a long time coming. I support staff recommendation for the fact is that my brother-in-law and sister-in-law live third house down on Charmilla from the storage. They live on that cul-de-sac third over, and the residents of that neighborhood were concerned about chainsaws and wood chipping on the premises and the fact that, I told them that, according to what I'm reading, that no operation, any kind of chainsaw or any kind of hand equipment would be operated in the, at that location. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so they were okay with that. Then they went into a long, lengthy rant about Kinchiara parties here and stuff, and I said, that's something we'll address, but the fact is, right now, we got the Great Scott Ranch, the parking there for them. According to the pictures, the trucks are backed in, it looks like they're backed in, so the noise concern that I feel is valid if the trucks were having to back out of the stalls, but if they backed in in the evening as they parked, I think that would convey a lot of reassurance to us as council members that that noise would be done. And the self-storage is a fairly large self-storage containing unit that is probably between the city hall here and the parking garage out there in distance. So the fact that if there's no chainsaws going and they're not doing wood chipping on the property, I'm feeling comfortable and I'm most pleased with their commitment to keep the historical Whiting Ranch barns still there. It's one of the oldest barns in Southern California, built somewhere in the late 1800s, and they're committed to revitalizing and restoring that. And that pleases me because I think that, you know, we in Lake Forest believe in, you know, remembering the past but challenging the future. That is part of the first, that parcel is probably the last ranch-style house that was there that was actually a part of the Serrano family land grant along that creek bed, but the fact is, they used that for cattle along there, and it wasn't such a ravine at the time. So now you've got a big gully there, but having a tree trimming specialist, an arborist there, I think that the health of the trees along that walkway would be enhanced by that. And so I'm pleased with your commitment to thoroughly looking into this, and so I'm good with staff, your recommendations there. And I just want to say that the city of Lake Forest is committed to remembering the past and challenging the future. This could have been an apartment complex or something, and I'm pleased that we salvaged it and someone bought it to, is actually going to restore the barn there. So I actually knew Bobby Haas. They used to have summer, end-of-summer lufts there. Old man Don Haas was an old-time cowboy, and I can just imagine what Griffith family found in that old barn, because he was kind of a pack rat. And so he was there, I don't know, he must have bought that in the early 60s, and Bobby used to have, end-of-summer, I would imagine Officer Puccigno probably went and complained about noise along there because of the lufts they had there, because they used to actually dig a hole and put a pig in it and have, they used to have a pool on the property on the south, on the west side of the house that's no longer there. But I still remember those wild, crazy parties there, but I'm happy that the barn's going to stay, the house is going to stay, and I agree with staff recommendation. So I'm good with staff recommendation with the commitment that they back their trucks in at night, so there's no beeping of the trucks as they leave and no chainsaws, no chippers, and I'm good with staff recommendation. So my recommendation is to move staff recommendation, and I thank you for your thorough report, because I know this is a long time coming. I know that you guys spent a lot of hours on this, and so thank you for your hard work.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember, you.
Thanks so much, Mayor. And first of all, this is part of my district here. I just want to give a comment that in the state of California, there's a lot of regulations, and actually it's a little over-regulated. Kudos to you to put such efforts to find some good use for this piece of very irregular shaped land and, you know, continue some legacy of our city here. And at the same time, it's part of my district, so I have a great chance to talk to a lot of neighbors as well, and also, you know, it's just a lot of things need to take into considerations. I want to ask staff a few questions here. First of all, we have XPO nearby, right, a trucking comp, logistic company. What's their business hours?
I'd have to look into their exact business hours, but we don't regulate the business hours typically, so it would be unusual to have any sort of condition on limiting their hours.
So basically, their truck, 2653, can just come in out at 24/7?
Right.
Like 7/11?
Right.
Okay. And also here, the noise report, it says meets the city noise standard, but my understanding is that meeting the noise standard doesn't mean there's no noise. It says no impact is technically no impact, but it's still something there, right?
Right.
And precisely, if we prove this, it consider optioning, because it's open space there, the residential owner there has no, little expectation, we're going to option this area into something which can generate certain level of noise, although technically it's below city's regular standard, right?
Correct.
Okay. And last question here is, I just want to ask the business owner, do they have to operate beginning at 6:00? If they start like 6:30 or 7:00, does any potential serious impact going to hinder their business there?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Couple of great questions. So I want to clarify something.
If I could, just for the record, could you just tell us who you are?
I'm sorry, yes. My name is Scott Griffiths. I'm the owner of Great Scott Tree Service. We've been in business for 48 years. We have three property, we have three projects or three yards throughout Orange County that we're currently at, and all of the yards have residents within several hundred feet of our property. We always back our vehicles in, so we don't have backup bells. Our people would not come to the yard before 6:00 AM. Typically, we open the gates at 6:00 AM, our guys come in, they double-check the lights and the hookup on the truck. They don't usually fire their trucks up till about 6:15 or 6:30, and as soon as they start the truck, they roll, and they roll right out. So they're not, they wouldn't be coming in before 6:00 AM, only if there was an emergency. You know, we get call-outs. We do the city of Newport Beach and Irvine, and we had done the city of Lake Forest in the past. So if there's a storm in the middle of night, would be the only time that we would come in before that, you know, the police and the fire have our numbers. But typically, we would come in after 6:00. We would not run any, all of our chipping and all the chainsawing is done off-site, and 99% of the debris, the chips, we actually take it to Terry Verde, to the Great Park, or back to Stanton. So only once in a while, when we have to transfer some, a little bit of water or something, would there be any chips there, but it wouldn't be, we would never do any operations or any work on-site until after 9:00, and we're always done by 3:00. But basically, the employees come in, they check their equipment, make sure the lights and everything are right, they get their paperwork from the day before, and around 6:30, they start rolling out intermittently. So not all vehicles fire up at the same time. They come in stages. We'd have contracts with the city, with Irvine Company, like we do Irvine Spectrum, and we have to be on-site at 7:00, so we need to be able to leave by 6:30 to be able to be able to do the retail project at 7:00. So that would be helpful if we have the opportunity to be at 6:00. And we want to be part of the neighborhood and respect the neighbors, and all the other properties, we do the same thing. If there was an issue, we would work through it, because we want to keep that. The other thing is, half of our chainsaws now, and as we're moving forward, are all electric now. And in the future, when vehicles become electric, we'll be doing that as well. They don't have a large enough at the moment, but as they do, we're looking at putting charging stations in there as well, because we want to stay on the cutting edge. But if there's any other questions about operation, I'm happy to answer anything.
So how many trucks you going to operate?
We're going to have about 20 trucks, pickup trucks and dump trucks and chippers. We have aerial lift trucks with the, and we have boom trucks that go out to the jobs together.
Okay, so they're not going to operate at all the same time, right?
Nope, they don't operate at the same time, and they leave at different times, because we do, some homeowner associations don't want us there till 8:00, some cities, some projects want us there at 7:00, so we have different start teams for different people throughout the day, but throughout the morning, yeah. And when they come back as well, they never, they don't all come back at the same time. They stagger on their way back. But it would be between 6:00 and 7:00 that all of them would be coming in and exiting, and by soon after 7:00 or 7:30, all the trucks will be gone. Then the staff comes in at 8:00, park in a different area, the internal staff in the office. So the workers go out first, the staff comes in, the workers come back and go home, and then the staff leaves after that. So it's intermittent, it's not all at one time.
Got you. I mean, I'm not, even you start at 7:30 AM, I probably jump out and post you personally, but as a council member, we need to make a balanced decision here. I would just wonder if any additional mitigation measure you can take to reduce the noise?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
If any additional measure you can take to further mitigate the noise?
So one of the things that we're going to be doing, I love trees. I live in Irvine, and in Irvine, I have over 300 trees in my house. This place, Lake Forest, is going to be more of a forest than it is now on our property. We're going to put all trees all around the, all along the creek. We want people when they walk by not to be looking and seeing our vehicles. We want people to hide them. On the other side of the creek, there's actually the transfer vehicles, and they're, 10:00 at night, they're out there, they're moving vehicles, and 5:00 AM, I've seen them moving vehicles around, and I don't think there's any been complaints, because like you said, it's so far away. But we're going to put tons and tons of trees back in the area to make it even a thicker and greener area, and that will help to mitigate some of the sound as well.
Oh, I mean, I want you to understand that I grew up in urban setting. I mean, I used to live in New York, the bus stop right there, even closer than you, so I got used to the urban noise. I hear the trucks, the fire trucks, the police vehicle all the time, I got hard time to fall asleep. But the rest of them here, they probably live here much longer, and that's open space there, you know? Once you resell it into some industrial use, it got be certain level of urban industrial use noise there that never anticipate in their lifetime.
That makes sense.
So, yeah, okay.
And our workers are very sensitive. We do things like Crystal Cove, where we're there in the morning and, you know, very, very quiet. They know how to come in stellar and stealth, because what last thing we want is to have any code enforcement issues. We work very much with both the city and with the Irvine Company to try to mitigate as much, to keep it as quiet as possible.
Thank you.
Great questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know you'll stick around, because we make...
Thank you.
I know you'll stick around because we make them back, but we're going to take this opportunity to see if there's any public comment.
There's no public comment on this.
All right. No public comment. Well, then I'll go ahead and, well, should I close the public? Well, I already opened it. Oh, yeah. So no public comment. So back to my colleagues, and we can discuss further. I guess I have a couple of questions. Let me start with you, Ms. Stonich, and then we'll see if we need to bring in the applicant. The woodchip storage, I know there were concerns raised about spontaneous combustion and all that. It doesn't sound like they're going to be stored there, but if there's a fire, they won't be? Or could you just walk me through that a little bit more?
Correct. There's a condition of approval that's been included based on planning commission input and agreed to by the applicant that they will not store the fire, the chips during a high fire hazard warning. Santa Ana winds, for example. The applicant agreed to that, and so that has been included.
The roads, so the access to the linear road, I think you call it the private drive?
Correct.
That's where the trucks will move in and out, but the non-trucks, for lack of a better term, that, they may go through the Kenyatta entrance. Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct. That's the revision that staff included from the planning commission input. We revised it to include administrative staff because they have had the access through that Kenyatta easement since it was initially agreed upon.
Okay. And then I noticed we now are going to have two parcels, one which I'll call the business side of the house, and then another one which appears to be more protective of the natural corridor and the creeks and whatnot. Is there any delineation between those two parcels?
Uh...
In the field?
Oh, as far as like a landscaping, there will be.
Just anything that delineates in the field so we all can understand where they have a right to go up to and where they're going past that in terms of protecting that corridor? Because I think there were some areas where there's maybe a little bit of, a little bit of places where we maybe, their property may be encroaching into that area a little bit?
So there's a few pieces to the puzzle here. With parcel one, of course, that's the developed portion of it. They were allowed to encroach into the easement 15%. So what you see before you is the landscaping plan. They will delineate their areas with landscaping, as Scott had indicated. And the other side of the creek is the trail, and that is also part of the property. The Serrano Creek runs through the middle between the trail and the property. So essentially, their property that they can develop runs quite up to the edge of where it drops off into the creek.
Okay. I wasn't sure about the drip line from the trees and whether that was incorporated into it, and that was an area they couldn't go into, but you're saying that's not the case?
Correct.
So theoretically, wherever the edge is before you fall into the creek, that's the edge of their usable area?
Essentially, they are, they are developing up to pretty close, you can see the blue line is the creek. Now, that's not where the water is necessarily, but...
Right.
Because of creek.
And then in terms of runoff, is that coming back toward?
I mentioned a detention basin in the presentation, and that's underneath the truck parking area.
So there will be no runoff going into the creek?
That's correct.
That's what I want to clarify.
That's correct.
We don't want to have that happen. Okay. I know there's still an outstanding issue with the trucks, or at least I'll check with my colleagues and see if there's still an outstanding issue with the trucks. Please.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to understand the process. So this was put in front of the planning commission, and they approved it based on a six, excuse me, 7:00 AM. And then was there like an afterthought to say, oh, well, no, we need to have it 6:00 AM? And did it go back to the planning commission for that? Or it came to staff, and then that's what we're seeing now in terms of the 7:00 AM request now? Is that how that worked?
Right. There was a, after the planning commission meeting, they had their consultant, their acoustic engineer go out and redo the noise analysis. And that noise analysis indicated that there would not be an impact specifically on the Charmilla neighborhood. Previously, they had focused on the Serrano Court neighborhood, which was even closer, the multifamily. So with this update, we were able to, the applicant was able to show that there was no impact from the noise, and that's how staff was able to support the condition as the applicant has requested with the early morning 6:00 AM start.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Councilmember Pocanio, looks like you've got a question.
Yeah, I do, but I'm just trying to figure out how to formulate it. So here's my concern. Like I said, I, I'm very wary about the 6:00 AM start, and I know he's explained rather well how they're going to mitigate, but Home Depot told me the same thing. And, you know, I'm getting calls at 11:00 PM, 5:30 AM, hey, come look. And that's what I do, get in my car, and I go look. Not saying that they're going to do that. And I totally understand that if we have inclement weather and a tree goes down in one of their, one of the cities that they service, they have to go do that. I get it. But my worry is that, that they're, you know, hey, we got this thing, we're going to take care of it. What can we do if it comes to where like, hey, we've warned you X amount of times and you're not listening? What do we do?
Certainly. Of course, we get concerns like this through code enforcement all the time. Typically, property owners are willing to work with us and adjust their use, whether it's people talking outside or cars beeping because of the backup beepers, they can often change their operation in order to accommodate that, and they're typically willing to work with us. In the case of Home Depot, of course, keep in mind that was adjacent to, there was just a wall. This has an entire building and is 380 feet away from that residential area, which helps to buffer any noise. The third is that the operations are not happening on site. They simply get in the trucks and pull away during the day. It's only the administrative office client, people that are working there. So that limits the amount of noise that would emanate from there at any other time of day as well.
Mayor and council, if I may?
Please.
Also in response to that question, which in part was, what happens if they are violating this condition or there is noise that is not acceptable between 6:00 and 7:00 AM? What can we do? What tools do we have going forward? There are two tools that you have. One is that this is a conditional use permit and a condition that is attached to it for the operation of a storage yard. That CUP can always be amended, and the amendment, which would be a second public hearing, would or could include amendments to the conditions of approval, which, in this case, would be hours of operations. You could bring this back in six months or in 12 months or in two years, whenever the problem arose, and amend that condition to require later start times. The more draconian measures that you have, or measure that you have, is the ability to revoke a use permit. This is really only used if you have a property owner and an operator who refuse to cooperate with the city and repeatedly violate conditions of approval. If they do that, then you can always have a public hearing to revoke the CUP and completely cease operations. Those are your two strongest tools that you have as a zoning authority.
And just to follow up on that, the if we were to modify the conditional use permit, that's a unilateral action?
Well, you would hope to have property owner consent and cooperation, but the council can take that action unilaterally to amend the CUP.
Just want to clarify that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
All right. Well, thank, that's what I was looking for, and not that, I hope that it never gets to that, and from what I'm hearing, that they're going to do everything to keep that from happening. But like I said, for the last three and a half years, I've been getting bombarded late at night. My wife's, where are you going? You know, I said, well, her name is Home Depot. So, and I'm not going to be getting the calls, somebody else is going to be getting them, but we're going to have people come up here and say, hey, you're not doing anything. And that's what I want to get away from. So I'm, I'm happy to second the Mayor Protam's, his recommendation for approval.
All right. Do you have anything else? Okay.
I think this is a time where we need to compliment our staff. I know this was a long, drawn out process, and working with county to get the easement, the open easement, and that was approved by the county, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So I know, I know that it was a long and diligent, thank you for your diligence and your hard work, and I think it's going to be beneficial to the, to the city. Thank you so much.
I'd have to thank Marie Luna. She has put in years of, on this project and appreciate her hard work on this.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Just one more comment here.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, the city attorney already answered my question here. It's, I think what we have here is always a hypothetical speaking. We've got to put this operation, put this thing into operation, then we can come back and look if they fulfill their conditions there. And I think the owner had offered some pretty reasonable answer here, and I'm inclined to support this measure as well. So let's go for a vote.
All right. Well, I don't know if I did, but I'm going to close the public hearing, and let's go ahead and vote.
And that motion passes unanimously?
Great. Thank you to staff, and thank you for your coming to Lake Forest.
Thank you for choosing Lake Forest.
Thank you, guys.
I know that part of the creek is really the most beautiful part of the creek.
Finally, there is some good use there.
All right. We are on to discussion items. The first one is review the comprehensive annual investment report and approve the proposed statement of investment policy. We'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. To provide a presentation tonight, we have Mia Correll Brown, Regional Director from Chandler Asset Management. Mia specializes in business development and client engagement for public sector clients throughout Southern California, and she has over 20 years of experience. She collaborates with cities, counties, and special districts to provide investment management solutions. And so Mia will be providing our report tonight on our annual comprehensive investment report and the annual review of the statement of investment policy.
Good evening, Honorary Mayor, Members of the City Council and Staff. It's nice to be back here in front of you again. I have a very brief presentation this evening just to review the investment policy recommended updates and then following with performance. So let me go ahead and scroll to the next slide. It is a best practice set forth by CDAC, which is the California Debt and Investment Advisory Commission, set forth by the State Treasurer's Office to review the investment policy annually. The city's policy is robust. When we were engaged in August of 2023, the city updated and adopted a model investment policy to really align the city's investment policy with state code. So these recommendations for this year for adoption and consideration are very, very minor. In fact, they are, they are basically language updates, if you will. So the first of which is to change language referencing SEDARs, which is a CD placement service, to allow for other CD placement services to reflect those additional providers in the marketplace. And the next two changes, again, are just language cleanup, to change language from portfolio to total portfolio to reflect the city's comprehensive investment program throughout the investment policy. And then the third, to clarify eligibility criteria for joint power authorities, and these are investment pools in accordance with state law. As I move forward, the next item that we're going to cover is the annual performance update. And this, I'd like to start with the objectives of the investment portfolio as managed by Chandler Asset Management, and they are first and foremost, safety. The second, and that's obviously safety of principle of those investments. Next is to provide for sufficient liquidity if and when needed. And then third, to earn a commensurate rate of return. And Chandler's goal is to earn total rate of return through a market cycle that is equal to, or at least above, the benchmark. And then the strategy is to invest in very conservative fixed income securities between zero and five years, rated A or better in conjunction with your investment policy, and of course, the city's objectives and California code. So what I've provided here on pages five through eight are a statement of compliance. I just want to remind the city that we monitor compliance with code on a daily basis and then report that to you formally as part of your monthly reporting package. So important here on page eight are the portfolio characteristics. You can see that as of June 30th, 2023, the city's portfolio was slightly above $139,581,000. As of 6:30, 2024, which is a year later, the city's portfolio grew as a result of interest earnings in our investment portfolio to $146,454,452,000, which is an increase of a little over 6.8 million in that investment portfolio alone. The average quality of this portfolio is very highly rated at AA+ and the average maturity is about three years. So moving over to the actual performance slide, the since inception performance was 4.46 compared to the annual benchmark of 3.87. And the quarterly performance, I'm going to look at my smaller, or my larger print here right in front of me, forgive me for that pause, was 0.87, beating the benchmark at 0.82%. The following slides are disclosures, and I want to go ahead and open it up to any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Colleagues, do you have any questions? Yes, councilmember, you?
I just want to make a comment. Whenever I see the report here, first of all, I want to thank all the council member before me and the council member especially Mayor and Mayor Protam, who have been serving this city for a long time, and also the staff to safeguarding this city. I mean, it's always a badge of honor when I talk about our city's saving here, while some other cities are struggling, have to re-sold tax and take other drastic measures here. And thank you for the good work, and appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, let me just check and see if there's anybody from the public that would like to address the council.
I have no requests from the public to speak on this item.
All right. Anything else then from staff?
I just wanted to highlight the recommended action, which is what you see on the slide before you. It's to receive and file the report and approve the proposed statement of investment policy.
All right. So you want to take a vote on this?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote on it.
That motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right. Next and last on the agenda is the League of California Cities Voting Delegate and So I guess we'll start and see if there's anybody from the public who would like to address the council.
I have no request to speak on this item.
All right. So colleagues, we are here to discuss unless the city manager has anything for, okay, I'll wing it. We need to choose a voting delegate and an alternate for the upcoming league meeting, which starts tomorrow through Friday? Through Friday?
I'll jump on the grenade there, Mayor.
You'll jump on. So what do you, what's your?
I'll be the voting delegate.
You'll be the voting delegate?
Unless somebody else does.
Well, okay. Well, so maybe staff can help me here. I don't, I'm not aware of any votes going on tomorrow, and that's the only day I'm going to be at the conference. So if, okay, I'm not sure if there's anything Thursday.
There is Thursday, the resolution committee, and I'm on the resolution committee, and I'm glad that Councilman Pocanio is there because if, if I, if we're fortunate, we'll get a recommendation from the resolution committee to go to the floor for this resolution. Can I, can I speak on this resolution real quick? It's a resolution that is common sense, it's coming from the League of City, which I don't always agree with, but if we could get it passed, it'll bring some common sense to Sacramento. Sacramento has a habit of making laws that pertain to local elected officials, school board and city council people and board of supervisors, and it doesn't pertain to them. The Brown Act is one example, SEQA is another example, the Levine Act. Counsel, if you could help me with this, I know there's like three or four other ones that just pertain to us as local elected officials and not them.
I think the last major one is a political reform act that doesn't apply to those in Sacramento.
The donations?
Yeah.
Yeah, the donations. So the resolution, if this goes on, that's going to be an important vote on Friday, and I'd be happy to be there, except that I have a family member that may be going into surgery for a heart problem on Friday, midday-ish. So if someone else would be the delegate.
Okay, so I'm seeing Councilmember Pecanio may be there for all three days? Oh, so he's there all three days.
And I'm going to pass this up, so I'll, I make a motion that we approve Mayor Pecanio as the delegate.
As the primary delegate?
Yeah, unless you want.
No, because I don't think I will be available for the days where those votes may take place. So I'm happy to yield, and if Councilmember Pecanio is going to be there, perfect.
You'll need it.
So what I'm hearing, if I can summarize, is that we are suggesting, or making a motion even, that it's Councilmember Pecanio will be the voting delegate, and you are the alternate?
But I think that we're allowed to have up to two.
But we don't, we don't need it, because he's already there for all of it, so he's got it covered.
I'll be happy to.
But you can be the alternate if for some reason.
I'll be there for all three days as well, but we already got the voting members.
I think we've got it covered. So I'll make a motion that Councilmember Pecanio be the voting delegate and the mayor pro tem be the alternate.
I'll second that.
That's my motion. Any discussion?
While we're on this topic, I'll bring it up at the end of the council, thank you.
Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on that.
That motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you all. We are on to the city manager's report.
I have nothing further this evening, thank you.
Thank you very much. Council comments, Councilmember Serbo.
Thank you, mayor. Just to kind of summarize some of the activities, if you haven't seen this week's mayor's minute, well done, Mayor Teddermer, on talking about what council members do behind the scenes. And so some good information there, and just kind of examples of that is that the mayor had his volunteer luncheon here at city hall, and that was a great opportunity for us to recognize a number of different groups. And then we also had some members of the Orange County Fire Authority Battalion showing us the different aircraft that are available, and then also Sheriff Don Barnes was in attendance. So that was a wonderful event and an opportunity for us to appreciate those people that volunteer. And if you're looking for something for some extra purpose or something that warms your heart, I would encourage our residents to please get involved in different opportunities we have here at the city. Also had an opportunity to participate in the walk to school event, which was that Foothill Ranch Elementary. I know it was district-wide, but we had Charlene and we had Tom Wheeler, our director, also there, and a couple of sheriff deputies that were in attendance, and watching the kids all come in and passing on information about safety and donuts and other sundries of things going on there. So that was a nice event for us to attend as well. And then on Saturday, we had the 50th anniversary of the Historical Society out in the canyon area, just a block or two away from where I lived, and realized it was out there. But some really interesting history here in Lake Forest, and had an opportunity to hear stories and actually meet people that were descendants of the Serrano family, for example, and just a great time there to see people and see that they're keeping that history alive. Had a chance to hold the hose and pull the lever and see what it feels like at the Orange County Fire Authority Station Open House, and that was kind of fun, watching the kids. And I don't know if you knew this or not, Mayor Teddermer, but just after you left, they had a call. So the kids had to jump off the fire truck and head on out, but they actually saw lights and sirens in action, so that was another great event. And then on Friday, we also had a really long-term vision come true with the Boys and Girls Event, had a ribbon cutting ceremony at the new property, The Meadows, which they're going to be able to enjoy, going to serve youth incredibly right here in Lake Forest. That's been a long time coming. Talk about a great group that volunteers and does fantastic work with our youth. And just also have the opportunity for the gala on Saturday night, and they had a young lady who was sharing her story about, who had actually come through the Boys and Girls Club. She became an expert in friendship bracelets, and then she passed that on to other people. She was so well-spoken, so mature, and it's just an honor to see somebody who's benefited from that Boys and Girls Program. One more thing, as the induction of officers at the D-Molay happened also while we were going on the last couple of weeks, and that's another organization meant, 12 to 21, that are making a difference in character development and service to others, and it's just a great time to be with those folks that I resonate with as well. That's all I have, thank you, mayor.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Councilmember Pecanio.
All right, I'll try to keep it under 10 minutes.
Hey!
All right, first, I'd like to thank staff once again for doing a great job. Last week, I went to the JPIA conference in Indian, Hot Indian Wells, and went to a presentation, which was an eye-opening presentation on artificial intelligence, learned a little bit from there, and then I went to another presentation on SB 553 compliance. Then keynote speaker was the drummer, Mark Schulman, who was the drummer for Billy Idol and Pink. He had an interest in presentation. And then I went to a couple of different breakout sessions. One of them was collaborative relationships with elected officials. And then I went to a wellness, on Saturday, went to a wellness seminar at Proth Row, and then I went to the, also went to the Saddleback Area Historical Society's 50th. And after listening to the mayor pro tem give this dissertation or the history lesson over here off of where great Scott is going, where they're going in, maybe when he gets off council, he can be or a historian for this society, and that's all I've got.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember, you.
Thank you, mayor. I also went to the Saddleback Historical Society, and it's such amazing experience there. I understand why those names coming from, Serranos, Los Alisos, and especially it's 50 years, I wasn't even born when they established their house down there. And also, I also went to the Boys and Girls Club, it's their nice anniversary screen event, kudos to all their board members who make such contributions to the city and the community, and also the OCFA. I didn't attend the open house, but occasionally jumped with the fire trucks for their day ride, and I'm probably going to go again with one of the house there, but definitely not 19. Last time I was riding with them, I didn't have a chance to eat a meal for the whole day there. In addition, I want to mention that all the community members knows there's a serious accident for the OCFA hand crew there. I have the chance to speak some OCFA leadership, and personally, I made some contributions to the individual OCFA member who's still in the coma, and I encourage our city to take consideration whether we can make contribution from our city fund and also our community who have come out, support the OCFA firefighter who's still in the coma. Thank you. And oh, one more thing here, two things. One is the first public comment, the lady mentioned the potential street crossing, and I remember that's the intersection, we have a fatal accident last year, right? Normandale, there's a cyclist waiting for the crossing while a pickup truck, for some reason, lost the control and directly hit the cyclist and killed her on sight. So I want staff along that, see if there's any mirrors, we can take some consideration there. And last thing here, I came here yesterday, I realized it's Climbas Day, and I want staff to take consideration whether we can add additional holiday to our calendars, including the Climbas Day, the Lunar New Year, and the Cinco de Mayo in the year of 2026. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem, voice.
Yes, well, I had the great pleasure of attending the grand rededication of the music jail facility, and I was thoroughly impressed on my tour, and pleased to see the improvements they made and the advancements they've made, rather than the chain-link fence they had used to have, where basically hop over the fence and be out. This is a secure location, and it's state-of-the-art, and I'm so pleased that that location is there for us, because the fact is, that keeps people being prosecuted and those that have done wrongdoing off our streets and waiting for trial. In some cities, they early release. In the county of Orange, we have a sheriff that enforces the law, we have a DA that prosecutes those criminals that have been charged by our law enforcement agents, and we need places where we can handle them and keep them safe and keep us safe from them. So I was very, very thoroughly impressed with what they have there. I think that if my fellow colleagues haven't done the tour of that, I think it'd be well worth going through there and seeing that, because they don't even get, they don't walk in the hallways to go to the mess hall anymore. The food gets brought to each quadrant, so that their mobility is limited, their ability to escape is nilched, and so I'm very pleased to say that I feel very satisfied with the improvements they made in that facility. I also attended Halloween at the Orange County Heritage Hill this last weekend, Friday and Saturday, this Friday, Saturday, from 4:30 to 8:30. Bring your kids out and experience Halloween in the old schoolhouse, the old Elidobe, Serrano Elidobe, and the haunted piece of parcel there, we have at Heritage Hill. So it's a great place to come and kind of feel the fall season and full force, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Oh, wait, I have a motion. I'd like to bring to the attention that some of the other cities have come forth, and I'm asking for a future council meeting, for this resolution to be a resolution from the city of Lake Forest, to be the mayor to sign and put it forth as a, in support of this resolution, fair and equal treatment for all government officials and all levels. Basically saying, if they make the laws in Sacramento that apply to us as city council members, board of supervisors, that they will be obligated to also stand with this. So I'd like to bring it up for a future agenda item, and I, for my, rest of my staff. Okay, pass that to them.
Sure.
For a future council meeting, bring it forward.
If I may, is there a timing associated with this?
No, I think that they're passing it, hopefully this week they'll pass this, and so at the next meeting, if we're on board with it, they'll just add it to the website.
Oh, okay. I don't know if my colleagues need a minute to digest?
We can discuss it when we bring it back to council.
Right now, we're trying to get it on the, you're trying to get it on the agenda.
Yeah, just put it on the agenda for discussion.
Maybe I can add a line to the council's comment, well, without digesting this one. I just want to add a comment to the music facility, because I'll have a lot of feedback from the community. It's adjacent to my district here. I just want to say, it's a very secure facilities, they do not have release at this facility. All the release will conduct at the Santa Ana Jail, so.
Okay, thank you. So colleagues?
I'll support that and make a motion.
Okay, we can get it on the agenda for discussion.
For discussion, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, mayor.
All right, thank you. A little bit of business, I received a letter from the Orange County Cemetery District inviting, I think it's to me, but I'm sure it's to all of us, to the El Toro Memorial Park, holding its 35th Annual Veterans Day Observance on Monday, November 11th, at 11:00. So just remember 11:11 at 11:00, and you'll be there. So I just wanted to bring that to my colleagues' attention, make sure you put that on your calendar, calendars. Also want to thank Mayor Pro Tem for running the last meeting in my absence, I appreciate that. So at the risk of being repetitious, I also was at the Orange County Fire Authority Open House, it's Stations 54s, which was always good, great turnout, lots of people from even the surrounding cities, so it's nice to see that. I was at the Saddleback Area Historical Society event, it was nice to see Helen Wilson, who was there too, which was fun. The Boys and Girls Club Gala was a nice event, I was at that. Also at the ribbon cutting for the Boys and Girls Club at the Mountain View property, which was mentioned by Councilmember Serbo. Also, earlier in the day, ACCOC hosted a tour for city officials from whoever chose to join, to come down and not only tour, but hear from both the city and Alexa with National Corps about the project and how it all came to be. So it was fun to share our experiences, mine as well as hers, and informing those that were at the tour. So that was a nice opportunity to share a little bit about Lake Forest's story with National Corps and the success of the Mountain View project. Was at the, not surprisingly, the mayor's volunteer appreciation lunch, and that was a great event, so thank you to staff for all that. And I was also at the music jail dedication as well. So I think that concludes my comments, so with that, we are adjourned.